The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the January 5th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Mayor Protem Yurha, who will lead our ceremonial opening. Mr. Yurha.
Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year, everyone. 2017 promises to be a very interesting year. Certainly, it's going to be a busy one. It started out pretty busy. This is the third workday of the year, and this is our third public meeting already. That pace is not going to continue, which I hope it won't continue. But one way or the other, we have our work cut out for us, I think, if we want to try to match or top 2016. And what do I mean by that? I thought I would just remind us all of some of the accolades and some of the high rankings that Cary received in calendar year 2016. First, of course, the Gold Award, first place for Parks and Recreation Management, which we just celebrated last month. It's an amazing accomplishment. And also, last month, we were named the number-one boom town in the United States. Not exactly sure what that means, but it sounds good. We were named the fifth-most educated metropolitan area in the United States. The fourth in the United States where millennials are buying houses. But that's interesting, not fourth highest of millennial population, but where millennials are actually buying houses, which is a growing trend versus millennials renting, as we typically think. We have the top business climate in North Carolina, and I'm told that's for the ninth time in the last 11 years. Here's one that's going to be very timely over the weekend. Top 10 safest cities to drive in in bad weather. We'll see how that works over the weekend. We have the Tree City USA Award for the 33rd time. We were voted second-most successful city in America. And here's a nice one, the fifth happiest town in North Carolina.
Woo-hoo.
And I smiled, which is unusual.
It's unusual. With teeth.
And maybe the most important one of all, in my opinion, the safest city in America. What a wonderful honor that is. There's one award that we received in 2015, but we did not get in 2016, and that troubles me a little bit, because in 2015, we were named the best town in America to go trick-or-treating in. And in 2016, not only weren't we the best, we dropped off the list. We weren't even in the top 20. And I don't know where we went wrong there. Was it the tricking or the treating? I'm not sure.
Scary thought.
And then there's one award that, if it existed, I think we would have gotten, and that's the best town council for their role in 2016 of hiring the best town clerk and best town manager you could find anywhere.
Hear, hear.
Yay.
And another award that doesn't exist, but should. It's having the best citizens of any town, anywhere, citizens who care about their community and citizens who care about each other. So we have a hard act to follow in 2017, but I think if we all work together with these citizens, we have the potential to make 2017 a very Happy New Year indeed. And if we're very lucky, I'm hoping to get back on that trick-or-treating list. But for now, I'd ask you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, you missed number-one place in the country to walk a dog. I just want to make sure.
It was just a partial list.
Our first order of business is to adopt an agenda. There's been a request to table item 6.2, the A.M. Howard property, until the council retreat later this month. With that amendment, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does pose.
No.
Motion was six to one, five to two. All right, we have an agenda. Our next order of business is recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have a special group in our audience this evening. PAC 152, Genesis United Methodist Church from High House Road, has their Wee Blow Troop here tonight. Thank you for being here. They're working on their Building a Better World adventure badge. Thank you. This time, I'm going to recognize our town attorney, who's going to talk about a settlement agreement between American Asset Corporation and the Town of Cary.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a settlement agreement to resolve a dispute between the town and American Asset Corporation concerning the interpretation of a developer reimbursement agreement. And under the settlement, American Asset has until December 2019, in which to use up to $800,000 in sewer credits. Copies of the agreement are available if anybody wants to see it.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Now, recognize Town Manager Stiegel for his update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you may have heard, the likelihood of winter weather this weekend in Cary continues to increase. The town has moved into early stages of preparations. Brining operations are complete. Our A-Team is equipped with 900 tons of pure salt, 2,500 tons of salt-sand mix, and 76 pieces of winter weather-fighting equipment to clear Cary's 723 linear miles of streets, about 544 linear miles of which are within subdivisions. Citizens can expect to receive updates from Snow Command in regular intervals once precipitation begins. News will be posted on the town's social media accounts, website, and Cary TV. And I'd be remiss not to mention that today is Ginny Johnson's birthday.
Aww.
How fitting our town clerk is spending her birthday night at a council meeting. We're so fortunate to have her be a part of the team. Happy birthday, Ginny.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel. Happy birthday, Ginny. Okay, we're moving to item number three on the agenda. It's Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your benefit because at a public hearing, you get more time. I'll enforce the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time is expired. And I will immediately interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a one-hour time limit on Public Speaks Out. I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're here with a group, that you have one spokesperson to speak on behalf of the entire group. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Town Council. I am Nathaniel Green. I'm a two-and-a-half-year resident living in northwestern Cary. Tonight, I come to you just speaking on my behalf only, not representing any groups of any kind. I just wanted to speak to you briefly about discussion item 6.1, the paid parental leave. Personally, I'm a father of a four-and-a-half-year-old, who actually we just registered for kindergarten today at Mills Park, and a 20-month-old son. And I also come to you as a pediatric anesthesiologist at Duke University Hospital. I really think being president in those first few months of life is vitally important for the health of all family members. Having experienced it recently, within the last few years, twice, there's not a much more stressful time. Having had things go pretty much as planned in my own family, but meeting parents and treating kids for whom it has not gone as planned, I cannot imagine the stress that they go through as well. The last thing that I think that they should be thinking about during those times is whether or not they're going to be having the money to pay the bills at home. I really appreciate the fact that our town staff are really, I think, responsible for what makes our town such a great town. And as a member of that community, I would like to ask for your unanimous support of such a motion, if one should come up during the discussion or at a future meeting, just to unanimously support this idea. I think it's part of a bold vision that I can really appreciate, being a part of this community. And as I know, you also have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're able to pay for everything that we bring forward. I personally would be happy to pay more taxes to see that plan come true. So I know I can't speak for all of our citizens. That's your job. But I want to let you know that I think, as Councilman Yurha mentioned, we are a community of folks who really care about each other, care about our staff, and appreciate all that they do. And I think this would be a tremendous example to set for our community. And I would hope that if there's any businessman out there, especially in our own town, that they would follow suit and consider that for their own businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move... Whoops, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
I'm sorry, I have bronchitis, so my voice is not very good. I'm Dr. Garamella. I'm one of the cardiologists at Cary Cardiology. I think some of you know me already, so hi. Anyway, so the reason I came here, I did not come here for my practice or anything else. So I came here as representing from Vanketeshwar Temple of North Carolina, which is a Hindu temple on 54 in Cary. So I think you all know that Cary-Morrisville Raleigh area has a very big Indian community, and then most of the Indian community are Hindus, so they all go to this temple. So we have a property on the 54. What we were told was there was something that you guys are going to make a decision today about the six-lane road, which is going to affect our temple pretty badly. So, and then I just became the chairman. I haven't taken the oath of the temple. I did not examine all the facts, so I want you all to look into that and make sure that you do make the right decision. I'm not saying that make the wrong decision for the town. You should make the right decision for the town, but at the same time, you should consider the temple, and then the community, and then the religious temple interest too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
I was here before. There was a restriction on one topic. You can, more than one people can speak, but I'm representing the temple. We swan in as a new board into the temple. I have a few topics I want to bring in, adding to the Garamella Ramaghar, who was here, to talk about the temple. Usually, we have patterns all over the U.S. We have a lot of visitors coming in, so it's not the representation of the community here. It also brings in a lot of visitors from outside, so we have a lot of problems with the parking and when we have events. So please consider it as a monument, a shrine, where a lot of people come in. So whenever we put a six-lane road, we have an architectural significance of our temple. They consider this as the second-most important temple in the U.S. Because any temple you go to, there is an architectural, like they have underground, they use underground for the cafeteria or something like that. This is the second temple which doesn't have anything under the bottom. This has a lot of architectural significance, so it's very important for people who live in, I mean, who want to visit the temple. So please consider that. We have other issues also. When we want to complete the temple, there will be a gate coming in front of the temple, which is, if you open the six-lane road, it would be falling just right in front of the doorstep of the gate. So we need some kind of leeway. I want the council to think about it. And also, we have bought the other, there's another property we recently acquired for completing our parking and then some event space we want to create there. So I would request council members to consider the significance of the temple and significance of the patterns who are... We have organized an event last year. There were people coming from all over the U.S. There were people from California came in, the people from Dallas, Texas. There was a family who came in from Austin, stayed there for, stayed here for two weeks for the event. So we have people coming over. It's not like just the Hindu community here represents the temple. And we also organize architectural tours for people who come in for architectural review of the temple. So please consider our limitation on if you open the six lanes, it would be badly affecting our temple. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
My name is Venkatesh Anantula. I lived before in Cary, and now I moved into Morrisville. And I represent the Sri Vankarishvara Temple, which is on the Balaji Place of Chapel Hill Road, and I am the Board of President there. And as my chairman and my other colleague said, the temple has been built on the Hindu-Vedic principles, and I'm proud to say that this is one of the best temples ever built in U.S.A. And we came to know that Cary and the Department of Transportation is considering to make it a six-lane road, which will badly affect the property of the temple. And as one of my colleagues said, the six-lane would exactly open at the doorstep of the main gate of the temple. And as you all know, many times you've visited the temple. It is the most beautiful temple, and many of the people who live in Cary, most of them are Hindus, and they come to the temple. Not only Hindus, I've seen many people who are studying universities, they come for architectural review of the temple. So we request, on behalf of the temple, please do consider our request not to make that as a six-lane. Instead, I would request you to make it as a four-lane road. I please request, once again, we made several requests to the city council and also the devotee, that please consider our request and make it as a four-lane road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Ramseri. I'm the past chairman of the SP Temple. One more frustration. We have come here a month ago begging, pleading that the expansion, not having a left-turn road turn into the Chapel Hill Road, would be very hard. We just want you to know, as a community, we're one of the highest taxpayers in the city of Cary, and we contribute a lot to the community. A lot of companies run by our community people. We watch, we are watching what you do. Please do not disrespect us. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
The six-lane road, I'm living in Cary last 12 years. I live in 55. There's so much commercial, I don't see six-lane road there. At the same time, in Morrisville, there is no six-lane road. And this is not a commercial, there is no much commercial in the road where we are talking about six-lane road. And all my colleagues requested you, the same I'm requesting you, this is Hindu-Vedic temple, the best second temple in the country. And everybody, I know Cary is a great place, but because of the Hindu community and temple, the entire Indian-Hindu community is talking about our Cary. Please consider our request. Make four-lane road. It's very, very important for us. Please don't do the six-lane road. Decision is yours. This is the only request. Please consider our request and make it as a four-lane road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all? Going to close Public Speaks Out. Usually, I don't address things, I don't address this, because I think there's a massive amount of miscommunication here. The Cary Community Plan is going to be voted on on January 24th. To have that plan, we have to have a draft. Staff recommended a six-lane portion for that road to be put in the plan. I emphasize the word, capitalize the word, bold the word, underline the word "plan." That plan can change. It could change next year, it could change to 10 lanes, it could change to two lanes. It's just a plan. So is it going to be built? Not in the next 10 years, at least. I'm the vice chair of Campo, which funds that road. There's no money mentioned in the next 10 years, at least. So whoever provided that information is really upsetting you for no good reason, because I honestly don't think that road's going to be built in my lifetime to six lanes. I don't know, but it can change. So we're just talking about a starting point for a plan, which can be amended, and I promise you will be amended. So I understand that you prefer to have four lanes over six lanes, and council will vote on that. But I think it's very important that you understand, this is a plan that is not going to be implemented anytime soon. And so there is plenty of time. It's not a set in stone, it will be six lanes forever, and it will never change. It could possibly change. So having said that, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, and that we're not building a six-lane road anytime soon, because there's no money for that, and there's no request for money for that. Anyway. So we are moved from Public Speaks Out to the Consent Agenda. This is item four. And for the benefit of the people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review all our Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, you have minutes. You have revised resolution to authorize banking signatures, ratification of resolution M16 Middle School Development Plan, 16 RZ23 Old Reedy Creek Road Res zoning inconsistency statement, 16A14 Gary J. Markham Trustee GJ M401K Trust Annexation, 16 RZ21 Walters Property Res zoning inconsistency statement, 16 RZ25 Arbor's at Cary Rend Drive Res zoning inconsistency statement, bid award 95-gallon rollout carts, tank license agreement for portions of town-owned properties for wireless commercial carrier, Duke Energy Progress requesting utility easement across town-owned properties. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion?
Nope.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda item.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does you pose? Motion carries unanimously. Takes us to Public Hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes rather than three minutes to speak at a public hearing. Our first public hearing is 5.1 Walnut Street Retail Conference of Plan Amendment and 5.2 Walnut Street Retail Res zoning. We're going to hear both staff reports, allow the applicant to explain the request, and conduct a public hearing. Council will not take action tonight. Instead, we're going to refer these requests to our planning and zoning board. Both of these items will return to the council at a future meeting. Ms. Gruber will present this item. You changed your name.
Yes. Got divorced.
It's going to mess her up.
Mess me up.
No, it's all good.
We'll present the Conference of Plan Amendment, and Ms. Dry will present the rezoning request. All yours, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Weinbruck and Council. This is a combined presentation for a comprehensive plan amendment with a twist, as well as a rezoning with a preliminary development plan. So the request is for a two-acre parcel located at the northeast corner of Walnut Street and Tryon Road. Included some photographs. The top photograph shows the subject property. So if you're facing north on Walnut Street, this is on your right-hand side, and on the left would be Tryon Village. And if you're facing south, where Walnut changes to Holly Springs Road, on the left would be CVS. And on the right is the cemetery in front of Colonial Baptist Church. So notification of the plan amendment and the rezoning were sent to properties shown in yellow on this map. And the slide shows the stream buffers in the area. You can see that there's a large buffer on the north end of the property. As per the Parks Facilities Master Plan, there is a nice network of existing and proposed greenways. There is a proposed street-side trail on the Walnut Street front edge of the property. Both Walnut Street and Tryon Road are existing major thoroughfares. And Go Cary has a future route planned on Walnut Street and Tryon Road. So as per the Southeast Area Plan, the current land use designation is office-institutional. The property is also in the Swift Creek Mixed Use Activity Center. This is a community-sized activity center. The intent behind an activity center is to have a mix of uses and a compact, walkable setting. And also, if you could please take a look at all the colors on this slide, and remember that in just a moment, that would be great. The applicant proposes to change the land use designation to commercial. The Land Development Ordinance includes these criteria that we look at when determining whether or not a comprehensive plan amendment is necessary. Staff does not see any changes, issues, or errors. However, we all know that we're in the midst of the adoption of the Cary Community Plan. That plan was in front of you in November for a public hearing. It went in front of the Planning and Zoning Board in December for a second public hearing, and we expect to see it back here on Tuesday, January 24th, for a vote. That is less than three weeks away. So in the draft Cary Community Plan, we have the Growth Framework map, and I asked you to remember those colors from before on just that little tiny portion of the Southeast Area Plan. So now you can see that we've generalized the development categories. We're looking at things a little differently with the Cary Community Plan. Also notice, there are five locations in Cary that have the dark-chocolate-brown color, and one of those includes most of the Southeast Area Plan that we were just looking at. So if the Cary Community Plan was already approved, this is the slide you would see for the current land use designation. So the Growth Framework Development category for the subject property is Destination Center. Destination Center is a modernized, elevated form of that mixed-use center. So a Destination Center is intended to include the most intensity of development in Cary and be a regional destination for our area. So what's interesting, the twist that I mentioned at the beginning, happens with adoption of the Cary Community Plan. When the Cary Community Plan is adopted, I'm fairly optimistic, this Comprehensive Plan Amendment will cease to exist. So hopefully, you won't see me back talking about this. So just keep that in mind, with the Cary Community Plan adoption, no Comprehensive Plan Amendment is necessary. As we are right now, today, a Comprehensive Plan Amendment is being... As we are right now today, a comprehensive plan amendment is being requested to go from office to commercial. So with that in mind, Katie Dry will continue with the rezoning information.
Thank you, and good evening, council. I will be presenting on the rezoning portion of the request associated with the site. The applicant's requesting to rezone approximately 2.06 acres from Residential 40 to Mixed Use District. This property, which you can see again at the corner of Walnut and Tryon, is located within the Mixed Use Overlay District. The Mixed Use Overlay District outline is in blue, and you can see it just to the north of the site. The rezoning is proposed for one property located at the northeast corner of Walnut and Tryon, and a portion of a second property, you can see this triangular sliver here to the east. So a portion of that property to the east is included in the rezoning as well. The applicant has proposed to rezone the site to Mixed Use District. The Mixed Use District requires a preliminary development plan be submitted to accompany the rezoning. So the applicant has submitted a preliminary development plan for a proposed restaurant use with a drive-through. You can see the building located here in gray with a parking, and the vegetated area located in green. And just to orient you, we've got Walnut Street here to the west, and Tryon to the south. This next image is just a closer view of the preliminary development plan. Again, Walnut Street located here to the west, Tryon to the south. We've got the church located adjacent to the east. The Mixed Use District is a flexible zoning district which allows the property owners to rezone land subject to the requirements that they establish in their preliminary development plan. So that means there's no minimum dimensional standards. The applicant can set the standards that are shown on the plan. So for this site, it was first submitted on June 2nd, 2016. The plan has been through a review of the Cary Development Review Committee, and has been revised prior to this public hearing. The applicant is proposing a one-story restaurant with a drive-through. The drive-through is located along the western side of the property. They're proposing a maximum size limit of 4,700 square feet. The boundaries of the rezoning are included here in red. There is a stream buffer in the northwestern portion of the property. You can see here, this is the location of their proposed stormwater management device. They will be installing a 10-foot street-side trail along the Walnut Street side as required by the ordinance, as well as pedestrian connections down to Tryon Road and to the church site to the east. They're proposing 50 parking spaces associated with the site. Proposing a recessed front door, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And also proposing parking between the thoroughfare and the front door location of the site. There was also a traffic study that was conducted for this site. The applicant's proposing to install two driveways, ride-in and ride-out on Walnut Street located here, with also constructing a northbound right-turn lane into the site. There were also a number of off-site traffic improvements recommended by the traffic study. The applicant's proposing to do one of the off-site improvements, which includes, at the corner of Holly Springs Road and Cary Parkway intersection, restriping the existing eastbound through lane to a combination left-through lane and modifying the signal timing. So just to recap the elements of the preliminary development plan, what they're proposing is a restaurant with a drive-through, maximum of 4,700 square feet, 22-foot building height, one-story, 10-foot street-side trail on Walnut Street. Again, because this is a mixed-use district, this is a flexible zoning district which allows applicants to set dimensional standards which may vary from the ordinance. So some of the elements of that that they're proposing are, they are proposing an increase to the parking. The LDO requires 32 spaces, or requesting or proposing 50. They're also proposing the parking be located between the building and Tryon Road, and the ordinance indicates that when you have a building at the intersection of two thoroughfares, there should not be any parking in between the building and the road. They're also proposing that the front door be recessed from the front facade and not address the intersection or the thoroughfares like the ordinance requires. There were two neighborhood meetings for this site. The first one was held on July 6th, 2016. There were no attendees. There was the second one on December 7th. The second one was triggered by the fact that they're rezoning the sliver of the second property, that portion of the second property. So we had to adjust the notification boundaries, which required a second neighborhood meeting. There were two attendees at the neighborhood meeting in December, and there were questions about the proposed use, road widening, and access points to the site. So this concludes House presentation. Following the public hearing, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicants here, I'd invite them forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant, Macedonia United Methodist Church, as well as my client, PGA Development. Katie has done a great job of describing the nature of the proposed use, and as she mentioned, it's essentially a 4,700-square-foot restaurant use with a drive-through to be located at this intersection. We believe that under the circumstances, given the existing built environment and the location of this site, that a restaurant use with a drive-through in this location is very reasonable, and I'll explain a little bit why. As Katie mentioned in her presentation, there are site constraints associated with this. There are constraints associated with the configuration of the site. There are constraints associated with access to the site that essentially limit the development options that the church has for this parcel. It's roughly two acres, so it's not a big parcel to begin with. As Katie mentioned, there is a stream buffer along the northern edge that essentially prevents the ability for this site to be combined in any meaningful way with any other parcels. And so there's not a whole lot of room to move forward north for this site. It's essentially isolated from the sites that are undeveloped to the north. And as you all are probably aware, there's a credit union that has been built immediately north of this site. Obviously, to the east of the site is the church, and the church is not going anywhere anytime soon. And so you can see that the church's parking further constrains development options of the site. And then you have Tryon Road and Walnut Street. And so for all intensive purposes, this is an isolated, two-acre parcel with fairly limited development options. Further constraining it is site access. As Katie mentioned, there's a right-in access. Fortunately, the church owns both parcels, so they were able to slide that further east down Tryon Road and away from the intersection. So there's a right-in access that will serve the site, and then there is a right-in, right-out along Walnut. So not having full movement access is a further constraint to the developable options that could be put to what is otherwise a fairly small site. And so under the circumstances that the church believes, my client believes, that a restaurant use in this location makes a lot of sense, just because I'm not sure there's a whole lot of other options for this site. I want to talk briefly about traffic, and I'm not a traffic engineer, as you all are well aware. But I want to point out a couple of things in the traffic, or in the staff report, just for you all's benefit. As is noted in the, I guess it's not numbered, but I think it's page four of the staff report, the total number of new trips during the AM peak hour is 109. And the total number of new trips during the PM peak hour is 75. And so just to give you an idea of scale or relationship to its existing area, and I live just south of this site, so I'm intimately familiar with how much traffic is on Holly Springs Road and Walnut. At full buildout, the Tryon and Walnut intersection will have 4,950 trips during the AM and 4,800 trips during the PM. So we represent 2% of the overall trips in the AM peak hour, and up 1.5% during the PM. So I just want you all to understand the fact, while there are new trips being generated, roughly half of those are pass-by trips, as noted in the staff report. And so the total number of new trips that we're generating is fairly small, given the amount of traffic in the area. Also, I want to touch on the recommended traffic improvements from the TIA. There are four of those identified on page, I think it's six. Again, it's not numbered, but I think it's page six of the staff report. There are four of those. The intersection of Walnut and Holly Springs, as mentioned, we're 2% of the traffic at that location. The intersection of Holly Springs Road and Cary Parkway, which is an improvement we are making, we're roughly 1% of the traffic. The intersection of Tryon and Jones Franklin, we're less than 1% of the traffic at that intersection. And the intersection of Tryon Road and Yates Mill Pond Road, we're less than 1% of the overall traffic. So I'm not sure the staff report paints a complete picture of the relationship of this particular use, the trips that are being generated by this use, and how the recommended improvements relate to it. So while we are making some improvements, we're not making all of them, and the reason why is that there's a whole lot more traffic on that road that is contributing to the problem, and there's no way that this small traffic generator, comparatively speaking, could afford to make the improvements that are being recommended. So again, we believe, the church believes, this is a reasonable use, given the site constraints, given the access constraints, and we hope that through this process, the council will support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now's the time for the public hearing for, sorry? Only one, okay, you'll get a, as soon as I start the public hearing, I'm going to call you up. Now's the time for the public hearing. Guys threw me off there. 16 CPA 04 Walnut Street Retail Conference of Plan Amendment and 16 RZ-16 Walnut Street Retail Res zoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Counsel, I appreciate the time to come here tonight. My name's David Cates. I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees for Macedonia United Methodist Church. We have some other church members here with us tonight. And so we're very happy to be at this point, to even be considered for something for this lot. I've been a member of the church for now over 12 years. It's just been of something that we have had, that we've had to care for, upkeep, clean up, pick up trash, mow grass, and ultimately not contribute anything to our mission or to the betterment of the town of Cary. I'm aware that many of you have heard our request before to try and get this rezoned at some point in some way, shape, or form. In my time as the, with the church, and more recently in leadership, we've had this piece of property on the market for a good five years. The sign has been there, and we finally got the opportunity to put it under contract. I said, "Please, Lord, let's just show under contract so that there's some interest in this property." We had a Firestone that wanted to build there, but they wanted us to do all the legwork to do what PGA Development has been able to come in and do. We're just church people. We have other things that we can tend to and make our community better. And so when Mr. Pantlin and PGA came in with this proposal, and the willingness to pick up and do the work that needed to be done, that was quite a blessing to us. And so what it means for us to get this lot sold is we're, in essence, going to eliminate the debt for our church. And so our mortgage payment that we have now goes into improvement of facilities, improvement of services in the community, increasing the work we're doing with various outreach groups and Swift Creek Elementary School. And so we just ask that you consider that the benefit of putting what community people told me, when they find out what is potentially going there, everybody's excited about, into play so that people can meet their needs, we can move on to do the work that our church needs to do. It's relieving to know that you're planning for the master zone is going to fit within what we're wanting to do, what the developers wanting to do. So I know there's a little bit of a tweak here for this commercial-type property and what's going on there. But considering that in the five years that I'm certain of, there's only been two people interested in that lot and doing anything with it because of the size constraints, we're begging you, take it. Let's go and get this done and move ahead. That's a prime piece of real estate, and to have only two people, they'd like to have our whole church lot. They'd like to tear our church down and build a Publix. We've been on that corner for 150 years, folks. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Phillips. I'm the owner of the CVS that's across the street from this proposed development. I have nothing against fast food and nothing against churches. I reviewed the preliminary development plan for this fast-food restaurant with Ken Dunn of the Cary Transportation and Facilities Department. This section of Tryon Road has been identified as, in the Imagine Cary Comprehensive Transportation Plan, as a future six-lane road. Today, it's a four-lane road. It has not yet been determined how this section of Tryon will be widened from four lanes to six lanes. As a result of that, this preliminary development plan has not taken into effect that widening. They just don't have the opportunity because it's not planned. I would suggest, however, that it may be prudent at this time to make a preliminary plan for that widening of Tryon Road and adjust this development plan, if needed, before final approval. This will result in the lowest cost to the town of Cary and the lowest amount of future transportation disruption in this very busy intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? See, no one will close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Just have a quick question about the transportation or the traffic study. Are both intersections access, or both access points to this proposed development right-in, right-out?
One of them is just right-in.
One's only right-in, right?
The one on Tryon?
On Tryon.
So yeah, so this one down here on Tryon, just right-in.
And there's a median there, right?
That's where I was going. So if you're going south on Walnut, right, and you want to go into this development, you make a left onto Tryon, can you get there from here? I thought there was a median right there. How do you get to that? What is the safe method for someone to get there, if they're going south on Walnut?
Let me pull up just a larger.
You can't get there for me?
You'd probably have to go down to this next stoplight.
And make a U-turn? U-turn, sorry. Make a U-turn there, and is that a safe, is that made for a U-turn? Is there, what is the safety concerns there? Is there any other entrance? Like, can they go north on Jones and cut in the backway? I mean, I'm really concerned about the safety at this new location.
This will have a connection to the church. Let me see if I can locate the slide for that.
I think so. Is the church, is that in?
I think if you went continually, because I grew up there, that's where I went to church growing up, you would turn on Macedonia Road left.
If you knew that.
After you came, after you went to a time or two.
If you knew that, right.
You would figure that out. So the regulars would certainly figure it out, that there's an easier way than a U-turn, but you're right.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the regulars. I'm worried about people who see it going in Bojangles. How do I get there? Or whatever it might be, sorry.
Yeah, I can't speak to the safety part, but they are proposing a connection to the church, so theoretically you could turn in and then navigate through the church, but I don't know.
So you would make a right, is that a light right there? Is it a, I'm sorry, a left into the church? Is there a light there?
I believe so.
There's a light down at Holly Springs.
Can someone, is this familiar with this?
Jones Franklin. There's a light at Jones Franklin.
I'll see if someone from our transportation.
There we go.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen.
Giving you a way out.
Bring in the bullpen. Most likely, if people are coming south on Walnut Street, they're going to U-turn right there at Tryon Road. There's a protected left turn there. They would U-turn there and doing the right-in, right-out on that. I don't think they would go all the way down to Tryon Road and try to somehow make a U-turn there.
So there is a protected.
Yeah, there's a double left turn. That's a double, that's a protected phase.
And there's plenty of room for that U-turn?
Plenty enough for a vehicle. There's three lanes wide, so there is plenty of room there.
That's what I need. Thank you so much.
And while you're both there, if you're done.
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Speak to the six-lane widening. I see at the bottom of this preliminary site plan, plenty of room for expansion. What about the six lanes? Could you speak to that?
Well, the six lanes, right now, there's two through lanes and a right-turn lane right now in Imagine Cary. The update that we're doing, we're suggesting upgrading this road from a four-lane, meaning divided, to a six-lane from Tryon Road to the east. That, excuse me, from Walnut Street to the east, sorry. So as people are coming.
So as people are coming westbound, they'll have three lanes that will have to drop one lane anyway, so the natural right turn lane that you see there today will be that sixth lane, outside lane, and they have to turn right. We're not planning to take six lanes beyond the intersection going west. If that makes sense. Yep.
Just a question regarding the street-side trail. If I'm not mistaken, I saw it in the staff report that that was asphalt. And I just don't recall many asphalt street-side trails. I thought we made them all out of concrete. If I'm wrong, just tell me.
Actually, if you could cross Walnut, which I wouldn't dare try, there's a... To the left of the end of the top one is a paved trail that goes down around Macedonia Lake, or whatever that lake is called.
Greenway.
A Greenway. But it's a...
Right around the street-side trail.
But this asphalt...
Along the side of a road.
Yeah.
I don't ever recall an asphalt trail.
There is down 55. It's asphalt.
Okay, maybe 1% of them in the town are asphalt.
I mean, they exist, is what I... The new ones exist.
Yeah, wasn't that built by the neighborhood, though? Wasn't that built by the neighborhood?
No, the new section was paid for by the...
And I know the existing sidewalk and things along Walnut are already concrete, so I just... That struck me as odd.
Yeah. We can verify that moving forward.
I think we'd have to work with our staff to see why that was... I think you're correct. I think our standard is concrete, but we do have trails around town that are asphalt as well. So we can check on that before it comes back to you on that.
Okay.
Well, since you asked the question, is the expectation that if someone takes that trail, that they would cross Walnut to access the other trail on the other side of the road? Is that part of the Greenway system or something? And what's the expectation for that trail? I mean, I... Don't get me wrong, I like it, but is there... Is it part of a connected system?
Well, I think in general, the whole pedestrian system is connected at that intersection, so to cross, I mean, we have protected crosswalks in that whole thing, so it's more than just the Greenway system, it's the whole pedestrian system in that area and being connected.
Okay.
The crosswalks and stuff are there. I mean, nobody's gonna cross across the middle of Walnut Street in an unprotected area, or at least smart people are not going to. My concern is everything else is gonna be concrete, look nice, and then you're gonna have this asphalt section, so I would hope that somebody looks at that before it comes back.
Other questions?
I have one. I'm familiar with a situation in another community, Fuquay, that had the similar scenario, the narrow... And for the life of me, I didn't think that that could work. Going that way frequently, I'm surprised that... About the egress and the ingress, that it seems to be working, but the irony is there... The parking lot at that place was striped for, I think, golf carts, or they're like for midget cars, these little smart cars. So they have a hellacious traffic problem in the parking lot because nobody fits in the spaces. And so you've got cars that are taking up a space and a half, they're at an angle. So my only appeal to the staff through this process, if this moves forward, is make sure they're to our standards, make sure, because of the tight turning that you're getting with those right turns in and right turns out, that the parking is practical and reasonable because it is a real problem over there. It's almost comedic to watch when you go by it.
So since you brought that up, I'm just curious, what is the standard for parking space width? Is there a range, or...
Yeah, there are standards, and they... From what I believe, that they are proposing to meet our standards in LDO. They're not proposing any modification from what the LDO requires.
Make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I have a question. I'll jot it down. When they mentioned the park, it's an exception, the parking between, because it's supposed to normally, in a major intersection, the road comes out, there's no parking between. Was the reason the parking got put on the south side, was that the only place they could get the extra spaces? They didn't want to put them on the north because to access those parking spaces, you have to drive around past the drive-through and do the bypass lane to go park in the front. So you have to drive around the whole building to get to those spaces, and I'm just trying to figure out...
I think the north is a catch basin and...
Yeah.
Where do they shift the building?
Why isn't the building further south and more parking spaces? The north, I'm wondering what the reasoning was because, for safety's sake, to drive around the building is what I'm trying to figure out, why they're having to drive around the building. Is there a reason for the design?
That may be a question that the applicant...
Does the applicant address that?
Mr. Barron, or somebody?
Somebody that drew the... Somebody that drew it.
I'll have a copy of the plan out.
For the record, could you give us your name?
Sure. Chris Bostick with Kimley Horn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel.
Name's on the drawing.
Yeah. So to answer your question, there's just not enough space to place additional parking behind the building. If you pull the building forward, you've still gotta have circulation around the building, so I've still gotta have a drive aisle between the building and Tryon Road. So from a space standpoint, with the stream buffer in the back and the stormwater BNP there, it just doesn't work out to provide the number of parking spaces we're looking for.
So you did look at this?
We did, absolutely.
So because you have to have some driving around the front, you might as well put parking spaces on either side of it, and that gains something.
Very efficient. That's exactly right.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board, and if the Cary Community Plan is approved, then the land use amendment goes away?
Yes.
I mean, the CPA goes away? Conference Plan Amendment? Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just to make sure. Sorry, didn't mean to say land use amendment. Thank you. Okay, we now move to our third item. Public hearing for round 38 of the Land Development Ordinance Amendment. We'll introduce... We're gonna introduce this item. Council will not take action on these amendments tonight, but it's gonna be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board, and Ms. Spearman will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. There are three amendments in this round this evening. Two of them are more substantial amendments, and one includes several minor changes. And as is the case with all of our Land Development Ordinance Amendments, we're bringing these forward as we continually strive to adjust our regulations to be responsive to changes that come about as we guide growth and development throughout the town. The first item relates to residential accessory buildings, such as detached garages. You may recall, in 2012, there was an amendment to the LDO that restricted the location of accessory buildings on residential lots. Essentially, that amendment prevented buildings such as detached garage from being located between the front of a residence and the street. The intent of this was to preserve the look and feel of neighborhoods by preventing construction of buildings that would really dominate the front yard in a small neighborhood. And that amendment was initiated in response to complaints from the neighborhood when the accessory building garage that you see in this photograph was constructed. And again, historically, to give some context with this, this shows the... An aerial view of that neighborhood, and you can see the existing residences, and then this lot that's a little different with that building in the front. In 2016, we received a request from a citizen to build a detached garage on a much larger lot. In this case, the lot is a little over 3 and 1/2 acres. The zoning district is R-40, unlike R-12 for the previous example. The existing residence is set back about 180 feet from the right-of-way, and the location of the proposed garage would be about 120 feet. And this is an aerial view of this example. The difference between this and the previous, the zoning for this area is R-40, R-40 through this portion, R-20 to the south, and then as you get to the north, there's some area that's R-8 and R-12. What the staff is proposing for your consideration is an amendment that would allow a detached accessory building between the street and the residence where the lot is at least 40,000 square feet, and the accessory building is set back at least 100 feet. And we think that this change would continue to achieve the intent of that amendment that you approved back in 2012 while avoiding any unnecessary restrictions on the larger lots where you wouldn't have the same issues that were encountered in the original example. The second amendment is a proposal to eliminate the requirement for neighborhood meetings for town-initiated rezoning requests. Prior to March of 2015, property owners and developers were required to meet with neighbors before submitting a rezoning application, and this provided an opportunity to explain the request to nearby property owners, gave an opportunity to hear any concerns and potentially make changes before a rezoning request was submitted. At that time, Council had some concerns with the timing of that meeting because we were not aware of the neighborhood meetings at the time that they took place. We would often have calls from citizens that we weren't able to answer for our lack of knowledge of what was being proposed. And also, staff was not present at those neighborhood meetings to just confirm that complete and accurate information was being provided. So the amendment, or the ordinance, was changed at that time, and effective in March of 2015, we required... Started requiring the neighborhood meeting to occur after submittal, between the time of submittal and the public hearing. And those meetings take place at Town Hall with staff in attendance. Since that change, we have had neighborhood meetings for about 57 rezoning cases at 21 monthly meetings. A total of about 900 residents have attended those meetings, which averages out to about 16 per meeting. Some meetings, we have zero citizens, and then in a few, we've had quite a few ranging from 75, 150 or more. The change that we're proposing is to exempt town-initiated rezonings from this neighborhood meeting requirement, and this is proposed in anticipation of future changes that we may need to make to more comprehensive changes to zoning districts or zoning overlay districts as we implement the Cary Community Plan, assuming it's adopted. The neighborhood meeting format that we have is really designed for rezoning requests that serve the purpose of obtaining development entitlements for particular properties. Typically, their rezoning requests include five or fewer lots, even if the acreage is larger, and we think this would be impractical in applying that to a more widespread rezoning that could include hundreds or even thousands of lots, depending on the nature of the changes. As we remain committed to being very transparent with our citizens as amendments go forward, so depending on, you know, the nature of any changes proposed, we can certainly schedule any informational meetings that we may need if we feel like that's necessary to assist the normal public hearing process. And finally, the last item includes several minor changes. One would simply clarify some existing provisions related to buffer requirements related to Class II uses. We would eliminate five-foot setback requirement that we currently have for walkways on single-family lots. We allow driveways to be adjacent to the property line, so we think that sidewalks should be allowed as well. Also, we're proposing to change our process to require submittal of any new or revised zoning conditions at least 20 days prior to a Council or Planning and Zoning Board meeting at which they are planned to be presented. That way, we... Staff has time to review them, and we can get them into the staff report for consideration ahead of time. And finally, change to add a crem... Allow a crematorium as a permitted use in industrial districts in addition to O&amp;I and general commercial districts where they're currently allowed. And that concludes staff's presentation following the public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. Now's the time for the public hearing for round 38 of the Land Development Ordinance Amendments, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, my name is Jack Wallace. I live at 301 Lake Drive in Cary. I am the owner of, and my wife are the owners, of the lot that wants to build the garage in front of the house. I would like to simply thank Ms. Spearman for wording the amendment so well to meet my needs. I think it's obvious it remains in the original intent of the LDO for smaller lots while giving me the ability to do what is necessary. I'd like to point out that while I'm on a large lot, I don't have the possibility of building the garage behind the house. The land, if you saw in the picture, there are ponds behind the lot that I do not own, but are adjacent property, and there is a steep fall-off from the house here down to the ponds. So there's no way to build a garage behind the facade of the house, front facade of the house. The lot is heavily wooded. You can barely see the house in the summertime from the road itself. The garage will be no different. So I think it's a no-brainer that this is an adequate ordinance and a request that you give a fair hearing. Can't say that I know what about the other amendments. I'm a little wary of removing a public hearing, which I just saw on one of the other ordinances. I think it's very valuable to our constituents, to our citizens, to get a chance to review, even if they're town-initiated proposals. So I hope that every effort will be made to continue to inform the citizens of any town-initiated changes with adequate time before the actual public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And just to be clear, we're not removing public hearings. It was an information session. There will always be public hearings.
Yes, the public.
Okay. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to Council members for questions or comments.
Yeah, I would agree with the Speaker with regards to residential garages, and I thank the staff for coming up with a solution that I think works the way they did. I think in these larger lots, what we're gonna see is even though the garage may be located in front of the house, it's done in kind of a... In a state-type manner, where you've got a long drive to and a drive from it, maybe even a circular area to get in. I think it fits. The problem we were trying to solve is when you've got quarter-acre lots and somebody puts a garage in front of the house. I mean, that's... That was the intent, I think, of the original ordinance, so I'm fine with that. I understand where staff in the town is coming from regarding the neighborhood meetings, but I think I need to better understand that more before I'm comfortable with it. And then the minor changes, no problem. I don't have any issues.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I just have one, but go ahead.
Okay.
I do have a little bit of issue with the way it's reading for neighborhood meetings. I'd like a little bit more information because I'm... I have to say, I'm not in favor of giving government a different process than people and developers. I just think that feels wrong, so I'd like to understand the... More about the reasoning behind it as it comes back and as it goes to planning and zoning. It just doesn't feel right that the rules are one way for developers and private citizens and a different way for government. So I'd like more information as that comes through.
Other comments?
I just find it odd that we want to add crematoriums to industrial use. I mean, we're trying to protect that land, I thought, but, you know, I think I would like to understand why there's such a compelling need to add that into our land use for industrial. That's all. Just find it...
Yeah. I'd like to know more, too. I mean, it's...
Seems kind of like an industrial use.
Well, I didn't want to go there. I was kind of hoping you would go.
I mean, yes, just find it odd, that's all.
So I agree with Lori regarding wanting more information. I'd feel more comfortable if we followed kind of a standard process regardless of who the applicant is. I have a little bit of question why we're still dealing with residential garages, because I thought that the legislative action that was done last year negated our right to have a... a say about the location of residential garages.
The legislation was geared towards design, and we're not saying anything specific about garages or the location of a garage door, which was, this is just strictly an accessory building and the location of that on a lot. So, where it's, there's, the legislation was geared towards design of the buildings, and this, we were, you know, very specific, not just, we don't specifically mention garages. We don't mention the orientation of a garage door, anything of that nature.
Okay. And as far as the setback for sidewalks, that's a side setback. It wouldn't be like somebody's sidewalk would be running along the front curb line right on the curb.
Right. It's more the, an example that came up that brought this to our attention was a case on a small lot where someone had a walkway that went from their front door around the side to access a side door, and that infringed.
Got it.
Closer to the property.
Okay.
So, for just a private walkway on an individual property.
But the side, not the front?
The way that it's written, it would be.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. It would be any, it would, but it wouldn't be the public sidewalk. It would be a private, a private walkway on the property.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes. I do see the importance of neighborhood meetings. Maybe informational meetings is a better, is a better term because we witness the public, you know, when we have the Public Speaks Out or a public hearing, people speak once, and there's very little interaction tonight with an exception where you explain something. But I think it's really important that we have the two-way interaction of our staff with citizens to explain stuff that we don't get during a public hearing. In a public hearing, there'll be people filing in one after the other, saying their piece, and the last ten people may not need to say anything because no one was able to get up there and explain it to them. So, I think it's really important that we have a process, maybe not of neighborhood meeting, but maybe you call it an informational meeting that replaces a neighborhood meeting and is well-publicized or something. That's my concern.
And I could give, I could offer an example that may help with some explanation of this if that would be helpful. One of the, with Imagine Cary, one of, or the changes with the Cary Community Plan, one of the changes that we will probably be bringing forward to at some point is to look at the mixed-use overlay districts. Those districts, those district boundaries are based on activity centers that are a concept that are, that's in the current land use plan, but that same concept isn't in the Cary Community Plan. So, even if, and the mixed-use overlay district was really created as the link to tie the land development ordinance to the land use plan and have that connection. We will need to do that in the future in a different way to make a, to make that match better with the Cary Community Plan, which could involve, you know, we may be coming forward to potentially consider eliminating the overlay district per se and replacing that with a better mechanism to match up the LDO and the plan. If that occurs, then that would be a reason, because it's an overlay district, any kind of adjustment with that would be a rezoning. And if you look at the mixed-use overlay districts, there's about forty-seven-hundred parcels that are, would be included in that rezoning, even though the rezoning itself would be, could really be looked at as more of a recalibration for how to connect the plan and the ordinance together. So, so having a neighborhood meeting format like we normally have and applying that to forty-seven-hundred parcels wouldn't be a fact, I mean, that would be unmanageable under our current scenario, but as is the case that we've done, you know, anytime that we have a significant change, we certainly want our residents to know and be able to have whatever process is appropriate, you know, with additional meetings or workshops or whatever, so that by the time the public hearing gets here, we, you know, do perhaps on a case-by-case basis, whatever would be the most appropriate to make sure that that information is conveyed.
So, this possibly could be an organization of informational meetings, much like the Imagine Cary meetings where you, citizens come to a meeting to get more information about this huge change rather than a neighborhood meeting about a particular.
Certainly. And we could, you know, look at if there's some alternatives we could bring forward to make sure that there's some, some alternative mechanism other than the neighborhood meeting in those cases where there's an unmanageable number of parcels to deal with in that format that was set up for more, a more development-related rezoning case.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, council, on this item, and we will bring back some alternatives, but just please know now that we understand that we have an obligation not only to the citizens but to you to demonstrate that we have reached out and made all efforts to inform them of these proposed changes. So, whatever we will be recommending, we'll continue with that commitment. And there'll be several different alternatives, and they may vary depending upon what change it is.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll see you at a future date. Thank you. Now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is paid parental leave. Council may take action on this item tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paid parental leave, three words that elicit a lot of emotion, people. Certainly a topic that has been heavily discussed and debated amongst myself and my colleagues at Town Hall. And when this topic was first brought to me, I believe it was my first week in Cary by Councilwoman Bush, I was generally supportive of the concept but wasn't quite sure of the need for it, considering the fact that we have very, very low turnover, we have high-quality employees, and at least from a cursory review, adequate leave time available for our employees. But what's so great about our staff report process is it forces us to do a more thorough, more rigorous evaluation of a topic that's brought before us. Because at least speaking for myself, I found that I was approaching the topic initially from my own personal perspective of what it was like to go through and what it was like to prepare for and make all of the necessary arrangements for the birth of my child, Emma, ten years ago. And knowing that probably wasn't the best way, or certainly wasn't the best way to approach it in my role as town manager. So, the work begun, or began, a lot of different people, most importantly, Renee is our Human Resources Director, but many town employees have looked at this, including myself. And I've gone through quite a change through that process, and I have looked at it from a dispassionate point of view, meaning in the most significant way, no longer as a father, even as a town manager, but from a, strictly from a business perspective, from a dispassionate business perspective. There are lots of reasons to approve paid parental leave, from social equity to humanity, et cetera, but from a business perspective, there are three reasons why I'm recommending it. Number one, in an ever-changing world where competition for employees will continue to increase and where a lot of the natural incentives to be attracted to local government continue to be questioned, we need to make sure that we have the compensation and benefits that will attract those employees. And number two, from a cost perspective, with the evidence demonstrating pretty overwhelmingly that this leads to better retention rates for those who otherwise might not come back to work during child, after childbirth, the cost of replacing and finding talent is very expensive. It's also very difficult. Case in point, Jeff Oma with his most recent announcement, "The best we will do is break even," and that is the best we'll do in the search for that type of talent, and that continues to go on as we make preparations for the continuing changeover in the organization as we do our succession planning. And, and number three, the overall message that it sends as far as culture, as far as the statement regarding innovation and being flexible and being beneficial to the employees is a, is a very powerful one. So, with that, I've gone from supportive to now to a town manager that has found a tremendous amount of evidence to support the benefits to this, and Renee will give us much more.
Good evening, council. As Sean has mentioned, at the Town of Cary, we understand that a positive and innovative work environment in concert with work-life balance creates optimal conditions for employees to thrive. Our culture is one of partnership between employees and the organization, and in turn, it creates a sense of loyalty and commitment. It is because of this culture that the best employees in local government choose the Town of Cary. Our comprehensive benefits package honors this culture and has been crucial to our success. It has allowed us to enjoy a significantly low turnover rate for decades, six percent for 2016. It's also defined our organization as an employer of choice in the area and is an important representation of our organization's commitment to our employees. However, our past success is not guarantee, a guarantee of our future success, thus the need to continue to adopt our practices to meet demands of an ever-changing workforce. Each year, staff dedicates several months to evaluating our compensation package. As you can see, this review consists of several factors, most importantly, consideration of employee needs and inputs. As a result, we have a very fluid benefits package. It changes as the needs of our employees change. It serves all of our employees, from millennials to the GI generation. As trends develop and new benefit offerings are established in the market, we review options and enhance our benefits after considering a set of guiding principles. We ask ourselves, what is the cost of a benefit for the town and for an employee? Does the benefit provide employees with choice? Does the benefit provide a competitive advantage in our labor market? Is the benefit convenient to access and use? And finally, does the benefit strengthen the employee's commitment to the organization? This approach has allowed our benefits package to successfully evolve over many years. It has taken us from standard health insurance to becoming self-funded almost twenty years ago to today's program, which includes benefits like specialized evaluation for autistic dependents, and most recently, the addition of two employee lactation rooms here on Town Hall campus. When discussing benefits, it's important to understand who we are as an employee population. As you can see in this graph, we are comprised of twelve-hundred-and-thirty-seven employees with an average age of forty-four years old. While fifty-three percent of our employees are technically considered within childbearing age, the utilization rate of a paid parental leave program would be much lower, likely in the single digits. The town's employee benefits package currently includes several leave options that support employees after welcoming a new child, to include things like sick leave, vacation leave, flexible work schedules, and telecommuting. We have experienced strong utilization of these benefit options, especially in our public safety departments. Staff has researched other employers' offerings of paid parental leave in both the private and public sector. We are aware of several well-known private sector companies that have added a paid parental leave component to their benefits package. These companies include SaaS, IKEA, Netflix, Cisco, Target, Microsoft, Adobe, and Google. As you can see in this chart, several municipalities in our area have recently adopted or are considering adopting paid parental leave. The city of Greensboro and Wake and Durham Counties have all recently added paid parental leave benefits. With the addition of paid parental leave, staff would propose the following definition for the program, which includes paid time off for the care of a newborn or the placement of a child through adoption, foster care, or guardianship. With the addition of this program, staff recommends the following program elements to include, but not limited to, six weeks of paid leave within a twelve-month period. It should be noted that we selected six weeks, not twelve, as a starting point because it's typical in the market. This timeframe can always be increased. Due to the lack of experience implementing such a program, it is not possible to project annual costs with the same degree of accuracy as compared to other initiatives. After a year's time, staff will be able to provide more specific feedback regarding actual usage of the benefit. However, the direct cost should be minimal as the town will only incur additional costs beyond regularly budgeted salaries if a department chooses to bring on temporary staff or assign overtime to other employees. It should be noted that there is the potential for indirect costs to the town. Those indirect costs could manifest themselves in things like work assignments being delayed. However, there is research indicating that positive effects related to paid parental leave outweigh the impact of an employee's absence. A study done by the Center for Economic and Policy Research has found that overwhelmingly a majority of business owners surveyed said the program didn't affect the company's performance or profitability. For example, you can see in this chart, ninety-nine percent reported positive effects on morale. Therefore, staff recommends the addition of a paid parental leave program for the following reasons. First, it is our goal to become the highest-performing local government in the United States by creating advanced service models that do not currently exist. Success will require attracting and retaining adaptable, multifaceted, high performers. Our employment practices, which have been integral to our past success, must continue to evolve to attract this top talent. Second, in addition to many Fortune 500 companies, several of our neighboring communities have approved paid parental leave or are actively considering it. Adoption of this program is essential to us remaining competitive. Next, this program meets the town's criteria for addition of a benefit. It matches competitiveness with the market, it's cost-effective and convenient for employees, it provides employees with choice, the choice of spending more time at home with their children, which in turn creates a healthy work-life balance, fostering commitment and loyalty. Simply put, it meets all of the criteria for inclusion in our benefits programs. Last, the experience of others indicates that the addition of this benefit is a net financial positive through organizational-wide increased retention and productivity. In conclusion, we must be prepared to consider this and other types of leave in the near future. As our employees' needs change and as the workforce continues to evolve, along with societal changes, examining this, elder care, and many other benefits will become increasingly more important to us. The town must continue to be proactive in monitoring trends and adjusting benefit offerings accordingly in order to remain an employer of choice. We must continue to do so in order to show our organization's commitment to our employees. There is no competitive advantage in complacency. However, if we implement family-related policies with a spirit of authenticity, we can maintain a family-supportive workplace culture. The benefit of such a culture in terms of gender equity, employee retention and engagement, and loyalty and commitment will ensure that we not only win the war on talent, but lay the foundation of our goal for becoming the highest-performing local government in the United States. And that concludes our presentation. Sean's available for any que, no, Sean.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I do have a question. Regarding foster care.
Yes.
Some people foster a child for quite some time. Some people might keep them for a month or two. Would they be qualified for six months for each child, or six weeks for each child? Say they, they keep a child for two months, they get the six weeks. That child is then placed with an adoptive family or something, and then they agreed to foster another child. Would they then get another six weeks?
So, legally, one placement of a foster child is considered a qualifying event, so the answer is yes.
Okay.
But I thought you said a limit of six weeks.
Within a twelve-month period.
Right.
Right.
So, they could only use six weeks.
So, you can only use six weeks every twelve months.
So, if they had fostered three different kids in a year, they would still only get six weeks.
Right. So, in your example, you would get one six-week paid period every twelve months, even if you maybe had fostering more often than that.
Okay, that helps.
And to follow up on that, so let's say I was going to foster three. And to follow up on that, so let's say I was going to foster three. Can I take two weeks here, two weeks here, two weeks there?
Yes, you can.
Other questions?
If you staggered the fosters to one every year, then you could basically have six weeks every.
Yeah, that's a, yes, sir, you could.
But, but that, you know, we're kind of playing this out to the extreme.
No, I was just answering a question.
But it's a good point.
Yeah, I would just say on top of all the great reasons that have been offered, I think this is a good idea because it's a compassionate thing to do. It's good for people to treat other people with respect and empathy and understand how tiring and exhausting it is to bring a new person into your family and how disruptive it is. So I think it's wonderful just for the sake of, on top of everything else that's been said, for the sake of compassion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just make a couple of comments. First, I'd like to thank town staff for taking something that was an idea and turning it into one of the best staff reports I think I've seen in the five years that I've been on council.
Absolutely.
I don't know who did what, I'm just putting it out there. It included detailed information, it had links to research, it had infographics, right? Pictures. I should say that to Jack. It was really comprehensive, it was very easy, especially for a non-HR person, to read and consume that information and feel like I got a handle on, on where someone with a non-HR background was coming from. One of the other comments I want to make is that the Town of Cary, our mission and second mission and value statement actually reads that employees are our most important resource, and that will attract and retain the best and brightest, and invest in their personal and professional growth. And I believe that this work, in addition to obviously creating a world-class benefit package, is directly attributing our commitment to that stated mission. Makes us a family-friendly and compassionate organization, and not only to kind of keep up with the rest who are leading, but honestly, to really lead. People look at the Town of Cary and all the kudos that you mentioned, they look to us to lead and to show them the way forward. And it also raises the bar for all employers. I mean, I, I can hear people say, well, at the Town of Cary, they do this. So this raises the bar, not just for the public sector, but for other private sectors as well. And offering this equal leave to all new parents of any kind is really a step to changing the attitudes that we have towards all types of leave. And I hope that in the future, as Councilman George brought up, when we first talked about this, there are going to be changes. We need to be flexible to move with the time and to point out that Cary is the best place to live, work, you know, own a business.
Raise a family.
And raise a family, and to learn. So I really appreciate all the work that you did, and I'll make a motion that we move forward on the staff recommendation.
I've got some comments. There's a motion.
Second.
And the second, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I think I kind of echoed a little bit what our town manager said. I was somewhat leery, having been in HR for a lot of my career, but I really want to applaud the business case that was put together. I think that, that was really important. And I want to really applaud that you didn't remind us that Finland does everything better than the United States, and they're smaller than Delaware and Rhode Island. So it was really nice to just keep it focused on business, keep it focused on the model and the ideal that has been expressed by my peers, I'm not going to repeat it all. And the future is coming, where we've got a wave of retiring folks coming up, and we are going to probably have to be very, much more competitive out there. It'll be a younger group that will be coming in. But there's a lot of things out there, like the elder care and a lot of things that are there, and I think we need to keep track of that. I also think we need to keep track of the cost when you start getting the data. Not that I think it'll change anything, but I think it's important that we always measure, and we measure things of this nature. But the fact of how well it was put together, how well it stayed on a business case, and not just the compassion, I'm not saying that's not important, but I think, but I think it's, it's the balance. And I think for a lot of our, our citizens, when you see how pragmatic it is and how it fits into the scheme of things and it doesn't really affect in the grand scheme of things, the cost burden, I think it was a job well done. And, you know, I was one doubting Thomas, and I really do appreciate the effort put into this, this professional effort. It was just great. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I'm just, I want to be sure and clear, because I'm kind of the guy that looks for the loopholes. I want to make sure that there is a, that a married couple, both of whom work for the Town of Cary, each get the six weeks off, even though it's only a single qualifying event, and I'm, I'm not sure how the language is worded. Can you address that?
So it would be six weeks maximum if the two employees wanted to split that up or, you know, share that time however they wanted, but it's six weeks and one 12-month period. So if we had two employees who were married and, for example, and wanted to use that benefit, we were thinking that would be one six-week period.
See, I would think there'd be two six-week periods, because each employee, in effect, as an individual employee, they had a child.
We're not that compassionate.
Okay.
I think there's a bigger.
Not encouraging dating among employees.
I think there's a bigger, bigger issue here where we're trying to micromanage.
No, I'm just wondering.
I, I think the question is that we have that intent out there and we go from there, but, well, it was an interesting question.
My only comment would be, kind of to follow up on Jack's, was, and I would agree with Sean and Jack on this as well, when this was first proposed, I was skeptical, still a little skeptical from the male part of it.
Male part of it?
The, the child bear, yes, six, no, I don't question, but if somebody's wife that works somewhere else, the husband, first year, also gets, I mean, eh, I'm not going to vote against it because of that, but, you know, it's, but I hope that there is a way that we can somehow track and study this as it's used and kind of report back to us what we think it cost and the benefits that we got in return. Because I, I'd like to know that. I mean, this is relatively new, whether it's private sector or government. You know, there's data out there that says this is the greatest thing, so sliced bread, that might be true, but I'm sure, as with everything, there's probably some negatives, and I'd like to know what those are. I would also hope that as people do take time off for extended periods of time, a couple, few weeks or whatever that may be, that, you know, others step up and, you know, fill in those gaps and stuff. And, you know, here at the town, I think we got some of the best employees in the world, and I think that's probably going to happen. But just, you know, how does that work, what's that cost, those kinds of things, so we can, you know, just take, take a look at it, and did we do the right thing or not, you know? Kind of gives me a little heartburn when I, where I see we start at six weeks and maybe we should do more, you know? I kind of think six weeks is pretty good. You know, for the record, I don't offer this to any of my employees, but they're all guys, so, you've either had kids or don't want anymore. So, like I said, I was a little skeptical at first, but kind of warmed up to it, but, yeah, we'll see.
I think an evaluation is a great idea after a certain period of time. And I, I'm no expert on this subject, but I'm good at listening to the experts and digesting the data, and the data is overwhelming that we should do this. I really think it's the right thing at the right time for the Town of Cary to do, so I support it.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Counsel, I just did want to make sure I recognize a few people that did a lot of work on this, and that's Hunter from the Budget Department, Laura from HR, and Danielle from the Manager's Office. There were others that did work on it as well, but they put in a lot of work and time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. The second item was tabled until the council staff work in retreat. We move to item three under discussion.
I, I.
I'm sorry?
The reason I voted against the agenda to start with, because that was tabled until the council staff retreat. It's my understanding that we already have an agenda set for that retreat, and I don't know that we should be adding anything else.
That was the recommendation from the town manager.
Which, which, again, is why I voted against it, but given that we had no discussion on whether that was the right thing to do or the right venue for that discussion or not, I don't, you know, if we've already got a full agenda and things to do with the retreat, I don't want to overload it, so.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I, I, pushing things off to the staff retreat didn't seem like a good opportunity. If you want to do it during a regular meeting, I would have been more up for that, but we always seem slammed at the retreat. I hate to put just another agenda item on the retreat that might take us, you know, an extra hour or whatever to talk about.
Whether it's work session, or maybe the retreat is the right venue, but I have, I have not heard anything that suggests that.
Okay. Moving to our third item, 2017 Legislative Agenda. Intergovernmental Relations Manager Lana Hi will present the item, and council may take action. Ms. Hi.
Good evening, Council. Your legislative program exists to represent the interests of Cary and its citizens in the North Carolina General Assembly and in Congress to ensure that Cary remains successful in the future. And to this end, staff recommends adoption of advocacy principles and a 2017 legislative agenda. First, a quick review of accomplishments in 2016. We were seeking two local bills, one for charter amendments and one to clarify that the town could donate its service animals to their handlers upon retirement. Thanks to our very supportive delegation, who all either sponsored or co-sponsored these bills, they were introduced in both the House and the Senate. As it turned out, the Senate versions were the ones that were moved forward and enacted. And shown on your screen is K-9 Robbie, the first retiree under the new Service Animal Authority, shown here with his former handler and now family member. For 2017, along with advocacy principles, staff recommends adopting a state agenda that includes a request for a local bill and support for several other items. The local bill is a request for the Apex Police Department to have authority on the school property in Cary where Apex High School will be relocated for a couple of years while it is being rebuilt. We also have some, recommend some statements of support or potential legislation on municipal election options. As you know, elections, municipal elections are currently held in odd-numbered years. The General Assembly has stated an interest in moving this to even-numbered years. With this item, we would advocate for choice, but oppose any mandatory changes. The second item is for small cell wireless infrastructure. As mobile data needs continue to increase, wireless companies are responding by supplementing their cell towers with multiple smaller installations. We believe our citizens and businesses want and need such capacity, but also, we need to maintain control of town facilities, property, and rights of way. We also believe that we need to protect Jordan Lake and our drinking water supply and support the importance of buffers and the buffer rules to protect them. We would also support changes to the Iran Divestment Act, which was passed a couple of years ago, to make it easier to administer at the local level. At the federal level, our recommendation is to support legislation providing for a level playing field for brick-and-mortar businesses compared to online transactions with regard to sales tax, and to oppose any legislation that would undermine the viability of municipal bonds, particularly as regarded to their tax exemption and their classification as high-quality liquid assets. I would be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Questions for Ms. Hi.
Just one question that, I thought I saw the Iran Divestiture Act on last year's.
Yes, it was on your agenda last year, and it was introduced, it was part of a omnibus regulatory bill that ended up not passing.
Okay, so we're just re-advocating and trying again?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the reason we're asking that the option be considered is because we feel like it's a greater chance of getting passed on that same municipal bill?
We are, we are, we feel like the way that was stated last year in, it was stated in a legislature that passed, it is the intent of the General Assembly to move local elections to even-numbered years by 2020. And there was a study committee set up to provide information about how best to make that happen. So yes, we believe that it would be an easier lift to say, sure, there may be cities that where that, that makes sense for them, it works for them, but we would oppose having mandatory that all municipal elections would be in even-numbered years.
Other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the advocacy goals, legislative advocacy goals presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
Now move to our fourth discussion item, Crabtree Creek Greenway Construction Bid Award. Mr. Kuhn will introduce this item, and we may take action.
Good evening, Council. As the mayor said, we'll be discussing Crabtree Creek Greenway bid award to Fred Smith Company this evening, and I want to just take a moment to orient you to where the project is located. It's shown on the map here, circled in red. It's located on the south side of Lake Crabtree, and it's located within Wake County property. It connects to the Black Creek Greenway. It also connects to the Town of Morrisville, a greenway project that they have in the works. And the project that Morrisville's doing, they also recently awarded it to Fred Smith Company for it to extend to Davis Drive. And this would create a 15-mile loop, as shown on, on this map, of greenways. Both the Town of Cary and the Town of Morrisville's projects are both grant-funded, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. In addition to the connections that were shown on the map, there will be some unique views from this greenway. This is one of them, looking across the lake, and that'll create a, this greenway is a destination point that people will want to go and visit and see. The project also includes a 700-foot-long boardwalk, and we included a bid alternative, alternate in it for a concrete boardwalk. The town has installed eight other concrete boardwalks throughout the town on various projects, and both the Greenway Committee and the public have responded positively to these boardwalks, and the town has found that it has reduced our maintenance. This image is of the White Oak Creek Greenway under the 540. As mentioned, this project received grant funding, which we originally applied for back in 2012. Grants require the time to apply, the time to administer them, as well as the time for granting agencies to review them. As you can see in the chart, the town's portion for this project is roughly 14% of the total project. Wake County's providing about 9%, and then the federal grant funding makes up the remainder, or 77% of the project. And just to show you the breakdown of how the funding is being spent, you can see the total project budget here. Today, we spend a little over $500,000 on the project. The construction bid award for the staff report is just over $3.5 million, and then that leaves a remainder of $1.3 million for contingency, construction admin, and NC DOT In summary, this is a good example of partnership, working with both Wake County and Morrisville for this greenway connection, and us using, being able to leverage grant funding in order to complete a key segment of the town's greenway system. Staff is recommending that council award the base bid and alternate aid to Fred Smith Company, and adopt a attached resolution documenting this award that will be provided to the granting agencies. Available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you.
Now move to our fifth item under discussion, revisions to the standard specification details of water resources. Sorry, had to look, see where I was. Mr. Hurd of our staff will be presenting the site, and we may take action this evening.
Good evening. The standard specifications and details are the blueprint that guide the construction of our public infrastructure. They touch nearly every department here at the town and are used by outside design professionals and contractors throughout the life of a project. They're important because they create a consistency to our infrastructure that helps transform a network of streets and. infrastructure that helps transform a network of streets and pipes and sidewalks into a community. They set minimum standards that help ensure that we maintain high-quality materials that result in low operating and low maintenance costs. Above all, the standard specifications and details help to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. It's important to periodically update them because we can't assume that provisions that have made Cary great in the past will be sufficient to make us great tomorrow. We've incorporated new but tested technology and techniques that will help projects be completed faster, cheaper, and with fewer impacts. It's also important to update the specs so that we remain in compliance with state and federal regulations and codes. Lastly, we wanted to update the document to make it more user-friendly, so some sections have been reorganized so that things are just easier to find. We completed the draft document back in July and conducted an eight-week public review and comment period focused primarily on the development community. These efforts resulted in approximately 1,200 hits on webpages we created for this initiative. Most of the feedback was of a technical nature, and we did incorporate much of it into the final version before you tonight. It's important to note that we didn't receive any complaints that the changes that were being proposed, that they would drive up the cost of developing here in Cary. Obviously, that's something important to all of us, and so we took great care in the revisions that we made. So staff recommends that council, one, approve the revisions to the standard specifications and details, and, two, adopt the ordinance amendment reflecting the changes to the standard specifications and details. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Now move to our sixth item, bid award for Jordan Lake Aeration System. It'll be introduced by Steve Brown. We may take action. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, council. I'm going to segue off of Ms. Hei's presentation on the legislative agenda just in regard with Jordan Lake. The water quality in Jordan Lake is always of paramount importance to the town, largely because it is our drinking water supply. And managing fluctuations in the water quality from the lake, especially seasonal variations that we see, continues to be a challenge to us in our drinking water treatment. The town has a history of innovation to ensure that we are able to provide cost-effective and the highest-quality drinking water. And an example of those innovations is that we were the first ones to have a full-scale ozone treatment system in the state of North Carolina. That was implemented in 2000 at the completion of the Phase II expansion. We have another innovation you'll hear about tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hurt to tell you about that.
The Jordan Lake Aeration System Project is a very unique solution to a complex set of challenges that we face at Jordan Lake. Jordan Lake is a diverse and dynamic ecosystem that changes based on the heat of summer, the upstream impacts, and the amount of rainfall that we do or don't get. All of these things ultimately impact the water quality in the lake and have the potential to undermine our great taste in drinking water. If we wait to address raw water quality at the treatment plant, we're fighting an uphill battle. In-lake treatment using the Resmex system will help us create consistent, year-round water quality in the vicinity of our intake. During the warmer months, the lake stratifies, leaving us with a warm, oxygen-rich layer at the top and a cool, oxygen-depleted layer near the bottom. When this happens, the naturally occurring minerals in the sediment are released, or they are dissolved in the water, and they're very difficult to handle at the treatment plant. The Resmex system pumps the oxygen-rich water from the surface down toward the lower levels of the lake, which prevent the minerals from dissolving in the water. The minerals never leave the sediment, they never reach the intake, and they never get to the treatment plant. The result is lake water that's easier to treat because it's predictable. The seasonal water quality variations will be avoided, along with the taste and odor challenges that come along with it. The Resmex system costs two to four times less than if we implemented a new process or new equipment at the treatment plant to handle the same issue. Furthermore, the maintenance and energy demands are much less, and there's no byproduct that's generated that would have to be dealt with. While there are other in-lake treatment options available, none are deemed viable because we don't think they'd be permitted due to their large footprint on the lake. You may recall the state of North Carolina's experiment with SolarBees, which is a much different mixing technology than we've selected with the Resmex system. They were attempting to use the SolarBees to control upstream runoff, which of course has nothing to do with our project in scope or purpose. We received one bid for the installation of the Resmex system, and that was from Crowder Construction Company. While the bid was higher than we estimated and budgeted, we still believe this technology is the best option for in-lake management of seasonal water quality variations. The Resmex system remains the most cost-effective solution to ensuring we continue to deliver drinking water of the highest quality at the lowest possible price. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the bid award to Crowder Construction Company and appropriate an additional $950,000 to the project to cover the bid amount of $4,122,000. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Questions for Mr. Brown and Mr. Hurt, or comments or a motion?
Just a question. Where else has this type of equipment been used and been spawned to be successful?
The city of Denver has implemented two units, a little bit smaller than the ones that we're proposing. They're fairly new, and we don't really have a lot of feedback there from them. That's the only other installation here in the states. Most of it has been in Australia and in the Middle East.
And they seen success?
They have. Certainly more so than what the state experienced with their experiment.
Well, that's just kind of my concern. I mean, the SolarBees were supposed to work too, and found out they're junk. And just looking to see what kind of track record this thing has, so.
And to clarify, the dollar amount, you mentioned $950,000. I've seen the staff report of that amount, $218,000 will be covered by the town of Apex. So our portion?
That's correct. Yeah, that's, as a water plant project, they have a 23% split with us.
So the net, when it's all said and done, will be 731 out of our pocket.
Right.
Other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with staff recommendation and appropriate the $950,000 in addition to the money already appropriated, understanding that $218,500 will be provided by the town of Apex.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now move to the seventh item. It's a council-initiated item. Council may take one of the following, and the council-initiated item is the dedication program and/or Heritage Tree Committee. Council may discuss the item and take action. We may refer to the council meeting for staff recommendation to decide not to pursue this item. Those are our options. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Robinson, who recommended this item.
Okay. Both, excuse me. A little tickle my throat. Both Ed and I were intrigued by one of our public, one of our citizens who came to speak to us. Sorry, I have a tickle in my throat, so I can't quite talk yet, but I will in two minutes. Who was just asking about, like, you know, dedication of trees, some kind of heritage tree program. And there are a couple of programs that we have in place. We have the Legacy Gift Program that does enable somebody to choose to donate money towards a tree. So that is a possibility. And then there's the Capital Area Tree Program that Lois Nixon's associated with. This, I don't know, like, when I looked at the Legacy Gift Program, I don't know if it maybe is as impactful as the citizen who spoke was hoping for. And kind of what I was thinking about, like, you know, as we really promote the giving of trees and the protection of trees in memory of citizens, maybe there's something, even within that existing program, that we want to enhance over time. I don't know what the answer is. I would really appreciate staff to kind of just help us think through this. This may be a totally non-identity. You may say, no, everything that's ever needed is already included in the Legacy Tree Program. But as far as the Capital Area Tree, I don't know the exact name. Do you know what it's called? Is it Capital Area?
I believe, I believe it's defunct. I did a little research.
It is defunct now. Okay.
I can explain that.
Okay, all right, well, great, because I think that would be a program that'd be of particular interest to our citizens. Citizens talk to us all the time about how much they love the trees here and how it's a huge factor in the beauty of our community, and so much so that I have a, one of my subfolders in my email is "I love the trees," because I have a lot of emails, people coming, writing, you know, "I came here because I love the trees, and now you're taking down the trees," you know, that kind of thing. So I thought it might be something of interest to us in looking into, but I just wanted to kind of raise it and see if there was any other interest on the council. And Ed had expressed a similar interest.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yeah, there are the two prongs to the comments of our citizen and to your original email. The Legacy Gift Program, I think, would, I'm hoping would cover the first section, but I'd want to hear from the staff to clarify that. As for the Heritage Tree Program, I did look into that. The Capital Tree Program was run through Triangle J, and that kind of stopped a couple of years ago. That's, that's the one that Lois had been involved in. But a Heritage Tree Program is in many, many cities, and you can declare a Heritage Tree for any reason. It doesn't, it's different than a champion tree. Some heritage trees could be champion trees, but not all have to be. Heritage Tree could be because of the size, it could be because of special species, special historic. I think of the Charter Oak up in Hartford, Connecticut. I don't think we have anything like that here in Cary. Or just as a landmark, I'm thinking of the tree on Academy Street that didn't make it through the last storm, that everybody passes and recognizes, could be declared a Heritage Tree, and usually do that with a little plaque or something. So I, I think that Capital Area Tree Program, from what I can see, is defunct. And I didn't know if there was any interest or staff had any information for us on whether that's a good idea or not for Cary to do specifically. So, you know, I, I thought it's worthwhile looking into why I seconded yours.
So if you want to make a motion to direct staff, we'll see how much interest there is on council.
Okay. What is, do you have anything to add?
Well, I, yeah, a couple of things. Thank you, council. As far as the gentleman that came and spoke about this, he has been contacted, and we have let him know, Doug's let him know that we're willing to find a place to plant the tree in honor of his loved one. He's been a little difficult, difficult to connect with, but we're going to keep, we have connected, and we're going to make that, make sure that happens. As far as a program, certainly the Heritage Tree Program would be a wonderful thing, but in the, in this type of instance, anytime a citizen would approach us wanting to pay for and have a tree planted in, in the name of a loved one, we don't need a program. The answer's just yes. I mean, and so we've made that clear to the staff. Now, for other specialized programs, I think those are nice additions too. But what I would never want to see happen is have a time when it doesn't necessarily fit into one of our existing programs, but it makes sense to everybody in the room. We should just be doing that. And so I would hope that would be our, our orientation overall. But the more trees that we plant, and the more trees that are planted on behalf of, of people that are cared for by our citizens, I think the better. And so I think there's actually a couple of other programs I think you might want to consider that we've talked about with staff, and so we'd be really pleased to report back on this.
That would be good, because one of the things I wondered about is if there are any programs that the town could run that would inspire people to come and donate in, for example, to beautify a median. So rather than the, the town taking on, bearing the cost, maybe a group of individuals would like to come forward and, and do that, and we could have some kind of program that inspires that. But, well, I'll make a motion that to, oh, excuse me, Jack.
Can I just pick me up that for just a second? When you brought this up, it begged a question that I'm kind of embarrassed, I don't know the answer, so. But we're getting, I'm getting personally, more inquiries about how people can contribute, not just a tree. I've got people that have said, you know, "I want to put a, a park bench in my loved one's name," or something like that. And a lot of times when I get those, I direct them to staff, and maybe you're doing it. So I don't really know. But I, I think that's a growing phenomenon as people are making Cary their permanent home. And, you know, I've had several of those requests, and, and so I, you know, I'm not, I don't want to complicate this request, but I'm just curious, you know, is there some easy mechanism, or do I just keep referring those people to staff? Because they seem to be happy. They're not calling back and complaining.
I think, you know, I think the Legacy Gift Program empowers this, but maybe we need to do, get out in front of it and publicize it a little bit more and let people know that it exists. So, yeah.
Okay, that's it. I just wanted to bring up that I think this is, is becoming more broad.
It is, definitely.
Thematicly correct.
More prevalent.
There you go, more prevalent. I meant to say that, yes, more prevalent. And I think that's great. I think it's, people want to give back to the town of Cary in a meaningful way.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come back to the council with some other opportunities for either heritage programs or tree planting programs that might engage citizens.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
I like, I, I feel like I'm hearing two different things, the dedication program and then a heritage program.
Yes.
I am.
They are different.
Okay.
Related, but.
I, I love the dedication honoring idea thing. The heritage thing, I'm not so sure I really understand it, so I'd like that information. But I would hope if they are two different things, they come as two different things.
We would, councilman, we would bring back, under the, the general topic, all the different potential programs, and you could approve them collectively or individually.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to our last item on the agenda, item number eight. It's the second council-initiated item, and it's the discussion of Realtor Information Sessions. Councilmember Robinson, once again.
Okay, thanks. So the reason why I thought this might be something that we, we would want to pursue is I talked to a lot of citizens with so many people moving here from elsewhere, especially kind of in that District A Western section. A lot of people are saying, "Oh, well, my Realtor told me this," and oftentimes, it's not accurate information. In addition to that, we have people come into our community, and their first ambassador for the town, basically, is this Realtor who's taking them around. And I thought, you know, maybe we need to really engage that group of individuals who are speaking and, and conveying information about our community to our new residents, and maybe bring them in, invite them in to come in and have an information session. If it's successful, it doesn't have to be limited to Realtors, of course, it could be open to anybody, but really bring people in and give them an opportunity to understand the future decisions being made with, with land use plans, with development reviews, anything that might be relevant, new school buildings, so that we make sure that facts are getting out to these ambassadors, and also giving them the conduit to be able to, to ask these questions and know who they contact with their questions. As many of you know, I, I have a Realtor's license, and I'm associated with a Realtor firm, and I'm fielded, I fielded a lot of questions from people in my office who are like, "Jennifer, what's going to be built there?" "Jennifer, what does it mean here? What's the sidewalk?" You know, and these kind of questions. "When's the school?" All these kind of questions. And so I feel like if they're asking me that question, there's many, many other Realtors out there who are taking around new citizens that would benefit from an opportunity to get the information directly from the town. So I thought it might be a, a neat program, if it's successful, and other citizens want to come and get, you know, just get a briefing every quarter or every six months, I thought it'd be worthwhile.
Okay. Ms. Bush, you're the co-sponsor.
Yeah, the, I think it's an interesting idea. I think one of the great things about Cary is that we have such a remarkable place that people want to come. And so I see this as a potential for maybe a partnership with the Chamber, maybe a partnership with the Realty Association. You know, maybe it, it's tied to our branding effort and our strategy there, right, and our communications effort. I do think that one of the difficulties is, and it's tied into what will eventually be our new website, is that it can be somewhat difficult to find information, for citizens to find information. So I think that's why there's sometimes difficulty for the average person to get, especially a new person, to even know to come to the town of Cary website to find information. So I think it's, it would be interesting to get staff report on, is there something that we need? Maybe staff says, you know what, this is really best handled by the Chamber, or this is best handled by us reaching out to the Realty Association. It'd be good to get. It'd be good to get the experts' opinion on what it would take to get the right information to the right people at the right time.
Yeah.
So, I support the idea. I don't, when it comes back, I don't know I would support a whole new program, but it'd be interesting to hear what staff has to say.
It could be, it could be created in many different formats. I talked to somebody over at the Association of Realtors, and they're like, "Yeah, we could partner on something like that, so, we could use, we could do it in tandem with other organizations." One thing I'd really like, I mean, there's certain confusions that people have about the way the town does its business, and one of the standard ones, they burns people all the time, is that the realtor looks at the zoning map and goes, "Yep, that's R40 right across there, so you have no problem. That's for low-density residential, and you'll, you know, you don't have a problem." And people, then, it goes through, and people go, "But my broker, my realtor told me this was going to be single-family, low-density, single-family homes, because it's R40." You know, those kind of prevalent, again, prevalent, common mistakes that happen, it would be nice if we could get out ahead of it and help people understand just the kind of fundamentals of understanding the business of the town. So, but, you know, I'd love to have the staff kind of think through it, maybe talk to the Chamber and the Association of Realtors and see if there's a nice way to approach this.
Yeah, I'd like the idea of a partnership, because one of the questions I'm going to ask is, how much is that going to cost to do? The other one you already addressed is make sure it's open to all. I think that information's important to everyone, and if we're going to go through the trouble of doing this, I'd like to have it videotaped or something where we put it online.
That's a good idea.
And people can look at it, again, depending on the cost, you know, but, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think the more information, the better.
Well, I'm not sure I agree. I think we're trying to overfix something here. Things are complicated, but there are tools out there. I don't want to rush to the solution. I think what you're bringing up is that there's a lot of complexity in Cary, and how do we, how do we get the word out? And you're using the example of the realtors, because they're like the first one that see new families. And, and so, you know, maybe with the partnership, but I really think Lori's onto something with the link somehow to, if anything, teach the real, the realtors need to know where to direct those new families. And the reason I am kind of leery is I just went through a situation with a long-term, very reputable realtor in the area that had one of the most basic fundamental questions that had blew my mind, that she couldn't answer. You know, she said, "We have private streets in Cary? When did that happen?" You know, it's like, hello, we've had private streets since at least the 70s. And the problem is, in a lot of those areas, they're aging, and they're going to their realtor, and if it was a new realtor, someone who had just got their license, yeah, but it really unnerved me that you have people, reputable people, I'm not, you know, being pejorative to the person, but they don't know. And somehow, I think we're trying to fix the wrong problem. I just, I'm just not sure it's the realtor. I think we have to figure out a way, as we deal with all these citizens that come in and feel shocked and surprised because they got the, hey, I was told it was R40, you know, that maybe that's, I don't mind this moving forward, but I think there's another solution out there, and I think it needs a little bit of thought applied to it before we come up with a solution of another program that then we're responsible for keeping updated. I would rather get the word out, we've invested so much in this new website, I'd rather get the word out. We've got this new website, and our goal should be to keep making it more impactful and more effective. That's where I'd like to see the answers.
And it might be, I mean, to your point, which I understand well, I mean, it may be something where we identify where the major misconceptions are, misunderstandings, and we put together some kind of informative piece that can be accessed via the website, where somebody can, you know, a broker can watch it and understand. I mean, I will tell you, the first, the first time I ever walked into my very first realtor class, that, you'll surprise, be surprised, yes, I was late, and the teacher was already talking, and she said, "Yes."
I was surprised.
She said, "In Cary, she says, 'In Cary, there is a two-dog limit.'" That's right, people. She said, "If you're showing houses in Cary, you need to tell your buyers that there's a two-dog limit." And, I mean, that was my very first introduction to real estate.
And no Red Roos.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, that just goes to show you that it's, not only is it general realtors, it's the people teaching the realtors. We have, we have some major misconceptions out there, so, because it's a particular, I think that there's a particular need out there, I thought there was something that we could, I can't, I don't know what the best approach is. I recognize your concerns, I recognize your ideas, I mean, there's different ways to approach it. If there's some cost-effective manner in which we could do something, it'd be good.
I appreciate the intent, and I appreciate the goals. I don't think it's the town's job to fix something that somebody doesn't know. I think that they, or any group or industry, is incumbent upon them to seek out the knowledge, seek out the truth, seek out the information. It's kind of surprising to me, I guess, how many of them don't know when they actually have an association that has a governmental affairs division and so on and so on. They have meetings where they invite elected officials and town staff members and stuff to attend, and they still don't get it right. Some are very educated, very smart, because they take the time to learn and get engaged. And then there's, are those that just don't care, and they just believe what everybody tells them, all they want to do is sell a house and make money. So, if the Chamber would like to do something, if they would like to get more involved, or invite us to more meetings, or have more discussions, fine, but I personally don't want to waste our staff's time trying to figure out how to better educate those that don't want to be educated.
I think the important thing for me with this whole discussion is the, that there's a problem that needs to be solved, right? I don't know that we at this table need to be figuring out the exact solution to that, but, you know, for, for all of us have been hit with some citizen, or realtor, or someone that has incorrect information, and they can't seem to find the right information, or they have the, they believe that they have the right information. Making our systems better for people to find the right information, whether it's proactively by going out and doing a program, I don't know if I support that, it depends, or whether it's making our backend systems easier to find it, I don't know what that looks like. But clearly, there's a problem that needs to be solved if every single one of the council members has seen it in some way, identified. I'd be, I'd be really interested in what staff comes up with, with how to solve that. I don't want to push any one solution on that.
And maybe that's the motion we ought to give, is a direction on how to solve this problem and come up with some recommendations, and one of the recommendations could be, this is not a town problem, this is a private problem, let them figure it out.
Could be, could be. Wait staff comes back.
My comment was, I really do think we've got on the right track with the website and making information fingertip available, and I think if we get that, then you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink, but at least we can make the water hole visible. And I think that's what I'd like to see, and I don't, I'm also, I don't think we need to have the staff do something else. We've been working on the website, why don't we wait and see how a website works before we have another program? That's what I would say.
Well, the website's not going to solve this problem.
Nope.
What the, what I would recommend, and would, will be recommending in the proposed budget is, the town needs three one-to-one contact centers that not only takes incoming questions, but also pushes out information and connects with the neighborhoods. So, the advocates not only take it in, but then they also go out into the community and hold educational sessions. Councilman France is right, there certainly will always be a portion of the community, whether it's realtors, what have you, that'll be kind of ignorance by bliss or by intent, but there certainly are a lot of others that are also too, realtors and citizens that are trying to get the right information. The one problem that the town of Cary has is, and it comes from, I believe, from a really good place, in the interest of being transparent and putting everything out there. If you go to our website, it's just everything. Now, it's going to look different, but it's still just overwhelming with information, and we, we publish a lot of draft documents, and I think sometimes we forget that it's very difficult for the citizens to distinguish between draft and final, and they form opinions and make decisions based upon draft documents, and that can have a very real, real impact. So, I think we need to make sure we're very intentional about how we communicate, how we put information out there, how we educate certain groups, and have it be very formalized, but we can make a significant difference here, there's no doubt. Plus, also, too, getting feedback from citizens that are, have moved here recently. And so, I'm obviously in a kind of a different position, but I'll soon here, been here six months, and so, let's say I'm just any citizen, you know, educate them, how is it gone? What have you learned? What questions do you have? And then, we can start to monitor where the gaps are at, because we do know is that realtors provide a lot of really good information and a lot of really bad information, depending upon the realtor and the information that they have, and lots of times, it's, I would assume, most of the time, it's not for any malicious intent, just for, that's just kind of their understanding. And so, an annual realtor tour, which is something that is very common, at least that way we know that we've gone out of our way to provide that information, and the way, you make them pay for it. I mean, so there's no cost to the town, because they get incredible amounts of information, and plus, they get to hand out, you know, a lot of business cards, which always seeking to do, but certainly during my experience, talking to many different realtors as I was making the transition here, I can tell you the type of information I got was all across the board, all across the board. And so, at least we'll know we've made those efforts, but it does go beyond realtors, and it'll never replace the self-sufficiency that people have to have to seek that information out, there's no doubt about that. But I, I think it's a multifaceted approach, it should be driven through a contact center.
We've had a good discussion, are we, can we give direction?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to direct staff to examine this and give us some recommendations to, you know, about whether or not we might want to pursue something.
Okay.
Help our community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Is that motion clear?
I can make it more clear. I mean, to, I'm sorry, I know it's fairly vague, but...
I'm kind of looking around.
Sorry. I make a motion that we direct staff to investigate different opportunities for outreach into our community, in particular, the realtor community, to help make sure that they're equipped with good information, easily accessible, so that they can act as ambassadors for the town.
Okay. Lori, are you okay with that one?
Pardon?
All right. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
How about hands raised? Those opposed? Four to three. Okay, thank you. We now go into closed session. Ms. Bush?
Let's see if I can remember it. Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 118, and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143, 318, 1E. Or 10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yes, Lori.
Motion carries, and we're going into closed session.
It's so close.
[inaudible][1428.11]
We'll reconvene the council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.
This has been a production of KIRI TV. Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.